All right. Good morning, everyone. Thank you for coming to attend this public information comment session for the city's community energy plan. Just a quick overview, the city was awarded a community energy planning grant from the Board of Public Utilities about a year and a half ago, year, year and a half ago. And the city is to and is utilizing those funds to develop a clean energy plan with the grant funds. We've hired a firm by the name of Greener by Design to handle the work. And the the work product will be finalized sometime in the second quarter of the year, probably in April or May for submission to the Board of Public Utilities for essentially quasi-finalization adoption. I don't exactly know what the proper terminology is in terms of how it's accepted by them. And then it will be a tool for clean energy planning and energy efficiency upgrades for the city, the municipal government, future capital expenses planning and opening the city up for access to to grants for clean energy funding sources and and zero emission vehicle funding sources. And so as part of that process, we're doing community engagement sessions. This is the technically third and final one. And I would like to open it to the floor for comments, questions, thoughts, et cetera, from the members of the public who are present here who wish to engage on the topic.
Hi, um, yeah, I have a set of questions. One thing I do want to note, though, is at the previous hearing that took place at the city council meeting last week, there was a an information sheet that was provided and that it doesn't seem to have been made available online. So you know, I just want to flag that for for any person who wanted to participate in this but wasn't at the previous one, they're kind of kind of would be flying blind without any information to go off of at all. With that, I do have a set of questions because I do, you know, have a copy still of the information sheet that was distributed at the previous meeting. And you know, follow up on some of the questions. Can you can you tell me just briefly? Is there someone who is on the line right now who will be able to answer any of the questions that I asked at the last hearing?
Possibly myself.
Okay, but there no other person with knowledge of the plan?
On the call, and she has some knowledge of the plan, but I don't think I would prefer to be the the question fielder because I don't think she was anticipating fielding questions today. So I I'll be the question fielder for the city.
Okay, um, well, I will note on that front then that it, you know, it is challenging to have an effective public hearing when the public, you know, has very limited information or no information to go off of on on the subject at hand. And when there isn't someone on hand who can you know, answer questions that are asked because if the if the goal of the public hearing is to get input on what the public wants, you know, that requires some level of knowledge transfer at the front end.
Right, but that's what I'm saying is that I'm that person, so I can do that.
Okay, great. I, yeah.
Able to rather, you know.
Well, I can I can start by asking some of the same questions than that I asked at the previous one and see if you're.
We would, if you could just reiterate them, I vaguely recall them, but I want to make, you know, if you just, yes.
Yeah, absolutely. So really, the the major overarching question that I have is that the transportation, you know, focus in this plan seems to focus exclusively on electric vehicles and, you know, CD fleets, and it does not specifically address mass transit or promotion of, you know, lower no carbon transit, transportation options like walking, biking, et cetera. And I'm wondering why that is.
So when we looked after after the meeting, the city council meeting, I went and I took a look at the the plan, the the state plan that is referenced on the topic. And they did mention some stuff about transit, but honestly, I thought the state went incredibly light on transit on that report. Mostly a couple of things about how do we fund transit, you know, long term, and let's keep making our transit more energy efficient. And those were kind of the overarching topics and they kind of bury transit in the in the document for the most part, except in so far as those components, as far as my reading of it was concerned. Um, the the thing is, and this isn't necessarily a preclusion from us doing things in that scope. The city is very limited in what it can do in terms of actual public transit. You know, we can encourage people like put out, you know, PSA, you know, take public transit or whatever, but this, we don't have a public transit program. We know NJ Transit runs public transit for the state and the whole region. And so us putting anything in the plan short of saying, you know, we're gonna keep doing, you know, dense development near transit, or we're going to try to incorporate some bike lanes or something like that. It's very minimal in terms of effectiveness, and it's certainly, for better or worse, the funding pools that are accessed from this grant process are basically for, in terms of transportation based, are essentially limited to electric vehicles. And insofar as the municipality, you know, we have a lot of vehicles on the road that are doing a lot of stop and go driving that's very inefficient for idling for diesel or gas vehicles. And we think we can make a major impact in terms of cleaning up those emissions and air quality through greenify or electrifying our fleet in the short, medium, and long term. And so that's sort of the the answer to why and how, et cetera. I hope that that gives some guidance on the question.
Well, I do have a couple of follow ups to that. So you know, you you mentioned that the, you know, the city has some limitations on what it can do in terms of, you know, mass transit. And I understand that, you know, NJ Transit and the Rutgers buses are, you know, different, you know, different entities that are in control of those. But another question that I had asked at the the council meeting last week was what stakeholder has the city been actively talking to about the development of this community energy plan? Because I would.
I got I got an answer from our consultant. Give me one second to pull it up, if I may.
Okay, great. Well, you're pulling that up. I will just say that you know, while the city obviously only has direct control over a certain universe of things for other elements of this process that, you know, that are outside of the city's direct control, such as mass transit, that's you know, controlled by the county or the university or, you know, NJ Transit. It it certainly would still be appropriate for to be part of the plan to work with those agencies and identify a set of goals with that work.
Something to bring back to our consultant for discussion. They, I'm trying to find the comments, but they 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 felt that the the plan should best be limited to the actions that are actionable by the municipality itself. So let's see stakeholders. Was drafted with input from departments across city operations, public works, police, fire, finance, planning administration, data processing, addition, planning process service, served as a catalyst to reinvigorate the city's green team, which had been the which became deactivated during COVID, and two public, well, three public engagement sessions for public input. City also leveraged technical support through sustainable jersey resources and planning consultants.
Okay, so so the city consulted with Sustainable Jersey, the consultant that you hired, and various departments within the city, but not with other outside stakeholders, such as the university or any anyone else.
That is who, yes, through our consultant consulted with those entities.
Okay, well, and and just to clarify, so you said the consultant consultant.
Right, because they're developing the plan, you know, I'm, we're hosting the meetings, but they're they they're developing the entire plan, right, with with sort of.
Okay, yeah, I just want to get clarity that when you say the consultant, you know, has talked to these people, there there would be no one else who would be talking to those people.
Right, I I I'm not interacting or interfacing with any of those people, the consultant or or groups, the consultant.
Yeah, I just wanted to get clarity on on who all is involved here.
Yeah.
Okay, well, that, I mean, I would like to, you know, hear from Greener by Design on on why they, you know, have not chosen to involve any outside stakeholders in this, the process of developing this plan. That that's, you know, strikes me as a little bit of an odd choice, and I'm wondering if there's a reason or if this is, you know, like, the first phase of development. And when we say, you know, final approval, what we don't, we don't mean final approval, we mean first draft, and then we're talking to stakeholders because it just, it does seem very odd to finalize something without talking to any of these other stakeholders here.
Yeah, for what it's worth, I mean, plans are always, you know, I guess amendable on a on timelines, there nothing's. When it, but when this is done, quote unquote, it's done, it's like a final plan adopted and submitted and a basis for applying for grants. So it is done. It's, oh, obviously, plans are always open for amendment in the future, but it will be no longer a draft.
Right, okay, um, right. And I guess the what I'm expressing is it it seems like an odd choice to me to go all the way through the drafting and finalization process without consulting major stakeholders.
Yeah, I I understand your question. I just wanted to clarify about, you know, the draft versus final stuff that you were talking about. I I I've not, I've made a note of the your other statement. And I I'll reach out to Greener by Design and and see what their thoughts are on the matter, see if I can get an answer.
Okay, I appreciate that. Um, and then I also, you know, did did take some time to review the Energy Master Plan for the state of New Jersey as well, just so I could be, you know, have some background for asking good questions here. So I related to the topic of alternative, you know, travel methods outside of personal passenger vehicles, which again, I know this is really the only thing that's addressed in the transportation section of of the info sheet that you'd handed out at the council meeting. I I noticed that, you know, it's the city's plan skipped over Strategy 1.2, which is improve connections between people, jobs, and services. So that, I think, is the the piece that dominantly, you know, addresses the need to reduce vehicle miles traveled, basically to have less car traffic. And I understand that the, you know, the plan is, you know, doesn't go extremely into depth on, you know, all the details of mass transit, but it does specifically identify, quote, reducing reliance on passenger vehicles and by increasing the use of mass tra- transportation. And by, quote, encouraging the design of streets and roads to shorten trips, minimize the need to drive, support safe bicycling and walking, and improving access to transit. And while, again, I know that the city, you know, has no direct control over mass transportation systems that currently are running through the city, it certainly does have some level of control over the ability to support cycling and and walking, you know, to reduce people's need or desire to drive. Which, you know, I I understand that that goes into elements of of city design and may may not be quite as, you know, not easy, but but straightforward as just purchasing new vehicles that are electric. But that does seem like you know, a a solution that could be very readily implemented by the powers that be in the city to just improve, you know, the ability for people to get around by walking and biking, by making the infrastructure of the city safer and more desirable for those activities. And so I'm wondering if, you know, if there is a particular reason that could be provided for why this was not included in the city's energy plan. And, you know, what what plans there may be in the future to incorporate this, because I know the city, in theory, has a complete streets ordinance, although I, you know, I really don't in most cases, don't see that being implemented in new infrastructure changes. And I think this would help if it was also included in here.
So as a half answer to that, because again, that's something I might have to get some more context from Greener by Design, especially because, you know, the the planning process launched like a decent while ago, so I'm not entirely in full remembrance of of some of those points. But the, where is it going with this? The part, a major part of the the funding and the the grant and the plan that we're developing with this grant is the city's actual sort of energy impact. It's basically how the municipality, like the municipal government will reduce its emissions. So the a big, if if not essentially the entire, the like crux of the plan is to figure out how to have the municipality itself in how in its emission that it's producing, reduce them and electrify, greenify, whatever terminology you want to do. So while I'm with you and not in any objection to any of those thoughts, I I think that a major part of why that probably wasn't in here is because that's not a measurable emission that's being caught created or like directly created by the municipality, you know, sort of in in its vehicle fleet or in its building emissions or heating or energy costs. And so I think a major component of this plan is how does the city reduce its energy consumption as a public body, not necessarily how does the entire, you know, five and a half square mile box of New Brunswick reduce emissions?
So it it sounds like what you're saying is that in the development of this plan for the city of New Brunswick, the community energy plan, there was an explicit choice made to exclusively focus on emission reductions generated by the city government and not by the community. Is that correct?
That is not what I'm saying. What I'm saying is, to the best of my recollection, the this grant and this plan, the grant that we were given was to develop a clean energy plan for the city, and the purpose of the clean energy plan is not not our choice, rather, what I'm saying is that this is what the grant is supposed to do. It's supposed to create a plan on how the municipality who gets it will improve its emissions and its energy consumption.
Interesting.
That, to the best of my recollection, the the purpose, the crux of this is, how does the municipality, the entity that is the city of New Brunswick as a corp incorporated body, reduce its emissions and its environmental impact that it's directly producing? So things like, you know, solar panels, community solar, electrification of vehicle fleets. How can it modify its permitting processes to, you know, allow community solar or rooftop solar more readily? Basically, those kinds of things, but I but it's essentially tied primarily around the city's actual emissions and energy consumption.
Okay, so what you're saying.
City has like the actual landmass, but the city has the, like I said, like the the municipal body that is the city entity.
Okay, so let me make sure I have this clear. It sounds like what you're saying is that the decision for the grant, the focus of the, you know, energy plan funded by the grant to exclusively focus on governmental produced emissions and not community emissions was a choice that was made by the entity administering the grant, not by the grantee.
Well, I'm, I have to go, I have to plead a little bit of ignorance in that I don't know if that was a choice done by the BPU or the legislature or whoever created the funding specifically. But given that the money came from the BPU, the Board of Public Utilities, their focus and tie in is based on essentially utility consumption. That's why there's the tie-ins to electrification and solar, et cetera, because it's Board of Public Utilities funding. Now, I don't know if they're being used as a pass through and the funding comes from another source. I'm not exactly sure the origination of the dollars. But that's, they came through the BPU with sort of that direction.
Okay. That's interesting. I, you know, I certainly would not have expected that that would be the case. And I'll have to, you know, to the best of my ability, look that up, but if you could.
And I will also look at it, because again, it's been a while since we had these conversations when we launched the the grant. But I'm going off best best information and the best of my.
Sure, of course.
Well, I'll also double check.
Yeah, and if if you would be able to, you know, follow up and and let me know, it just clarify the facts, I would appreciate that, because it the overall point here is, at some point in this process, by some entity, the choice was made to not focus on the broader community and to, as you're saying it, focus solely on emissions reductions by the government of the city of New Brunswick.
Well, again, all governments get it. So if another municipality got it, because because we are not the only ones who got this, so.
Right, no, I, what, well, what I'm saying is, it's it's until, you know, one or both of us can find the guidelines and go back and double check, it's it's unclear to me at what point was that decision made? Was it made by the legislature, by the governor's office, by the, you know, BPU, by, you know, the consultant, you know, it's I know what you're saying is you are pretty sure that it was made by some decision maker prior to when the grant was handed out. And I I just think that that deserves some clarity, because it it is a pretty significant limitation. You know, if if the community is not being factored into this, that that's most of. I mean, it, you know, it's basically making an energy plan, call it a community energy plan, but it's not a community energy plan. And it's disregarding most of the energy that is produced or consumed by the community, so. It just strikes me as as very strange, and I I would like to know where that, where along the process that choice was made.
I will do my best to try to get some information on that.
Okay, I appreciate that. And then you know, in a separate question, moving on from the, you know, transportation related sections here. I noticed that that in the, you know, again, in the information sheet, which I only have access to because I was at a previous hearing, there isn't any, you know, any mention of of strategy number four, which is to decrease emissions from the building sector. Which, you know, I first off, I say, I I know that that's very difficult, right? I know that that's not a straightforward thing. It's not as straightforward as buying one electric vehicle or, you know, even as as simple necessarily as repaving the sidewalks to make that, you know, a more desirable travel method for people, right? I know that retrofitting buildings or, you know, the longer term, bigger projects of knocking down buildings and building new, more energy efficient ones is hard. But that is pretty squarely in the control of the city of New Brunswick for city-owned properties, of which there are a number. And I'm wondering why that was not included in this plan.
The city believes that our major short term and medium term impact that we can have is through the electrification of the fleet and reducing direct vehicle emissions in the city neighborhoods from vehicle idling from fossil fuel vehicles. It's something that's readily actionable, and it can have an immediate, relatively immediate change once vehicles are turned over to those types of vehicles, to electric, maybe plug-in hybrids. And so that's quick and actionable with an impact, whereas and relatively accessible for the expected pools of funding access that are likely to come from this, which are in the, you know, maybe low, very low six-figure, like $100,000 type funds in the not-too-distant future per year, maybe if we're lucky, which isn't even, you know, we we can't even probably insulate a building that the municipality has for that much after labor costs and all the other components involved in something like that. Whereas, again, this is sort of an effective and easy and something we could do now and not something we have to wait, you know, potentially 10 or 20 years to to do, depending on funding access.
Okay, so so what you're saying is the reason it was not included primarily is because this plan is targeted towards anything that can reduce the emissions, you know, produced by the the government of the city of New Brunswick the fastest, the most, and for the smallest dollar cost to the city based on external resources that can be applied for in grants. Is that fair to say? That's not a criticism, that's that's.
No, no, I mean, I think I think it's, I think it's mostly accurate. I think I I would really harp on the fact, well, not harp, harp's not the right word. I'd really like lean on the fact that it's again, also probably the most easily actionable thing we can do fast. Right, we can go out to bid or go to state contract and acquire one of these vehicles theoretically tomorrow, like if we had access to funds today. The other process, just the design process is, you know, a couple of years, maybe, without factoring in any of the other things. And again, we have, the city has a ton of vehicles. A lot of them admit they they idle because they drive between inspections or they're looking at this or that. Cop cars drive around, you know, on, you know, slow city streets. Not there's anything wrong with slow city streets, but they're, you know, basically functionally idling around the city, doing their job. And and as we can clean that up, we're not directly dumping, you know, gasoline or or diesel emissions, right, in people's neighborhoods. So we think that there's a benefit there, and it's something we can do quickly. And there is the prospective limitation of future dollars. And if there are more dollars that come in the future that, you know, are for building retrofits, then that's something where maybe the plan gets amended. And so we can pursue those avenues. Because we're not against that. We we definitely want to fix everything, but we're trying to work within the boundaries of what's available to us.
Okay. I I have a couple other, you know, just bigger picture questions, not specifically related to the, you know, nitty gritty, you know, sub-bullet points of what could have happened based on the state plan. So I I know that you, you know, throughout this conversation have put a heavy emphasis on availability of of grant funds, you know, for electric vehicles versus for other things. And, you know, I'm very, you know, well aware that anytime that that grants are offered, they're almost never for the to cover the full cost of the project. There's almost always, you know, some amount of money that would have to be provided by the the grantee, you know, to realistically pursue whatever the project is. And so. And so, uh, I'm wondering, um, if you can give some level of insight, not an exact number, but just some sense of how much the city is choosing to prioritize this, um, in terms of spending its own money to implement this versus just waiting for grants to be available to implement it?
So, um, the grants that we have heard that are coming down the pipeline or may exist now, or we may be able to apply for in the very near future, talking on the order of months. None of them have a match requirement, so none of them will require any city funds to do so. But on a more medium-term picture, uh, utilizing these grant funds, so in, in the short term, it's basically, I think we're looking at a grant-funded, zero-city-dollar investment, uh, you know, short of sta- staff time, sort of, uh, you know, investment in making sure that things get done and done correctly, uh, oversight and whatnot, administrative things. But the, uh, for example, again, leaning on the electric vehicle stuff, you know, we buy some electric vehicles to start the, uh, electrification process. We buy charging infrastructure, we install the charging infrastructure. Now we have a basis for as vehicles fall off the, uh, the fleet, right? They become too old, they become unmaintainable. They get damaged, whatever, right? There's, there's a million reasons that a vehicle could go out of commission. And at that point, now that we have existing infrastructure that can support it, that we got with that grant, then the city can, as though we're buying any vehicle that it does normally, uh, y- you know, go out and purchase those vehicles through, uh, you know, either capital expending or however they choose to do so. But that's sort of like a more midterm situation, once we have, uh, infrastructure in place. And mind you, like, we're pursuing vehicles and the supporting infrastructure with, with the grants that we're looking to pursue, right? We're not just looking to buy the vehicles and just have them sit in the parking lot.
Sure. Um, so, uh, you know, on that front of, you know, of, uh, short-term, no, you know, necessity of sp- spending, I think, as you put it, zero-city dollars, right, you know, toward, towards this and, and relying uh, almost exclusively, if not exclusively, on the grant funds that would be made available. Uh, it just, I mean, it is great that there are grants available and, you know, the more, uh, that higher levels of government can prioritize clean energy by providing these incentives, you know, for local governments, the better. Because it definitely does make it easier to get more done. And also, I think, it, you know, big picture, how a city spends its own money is a reflection of what that city views as most important. Right? I mean, pe- you know, people in the government who are deciding budget priorities are, are deciding it based on what they think is important to spend money on. As you, as you noted, a lot of things that would be, you know, steps on the journey towards a, a clean energy future, a, you know, a low, a low emission future for the city, both in terms of its own governmental produced emissions and certainly in terms of community-produced emissions. It's expensive. It can, it costs a lot of money to make progress on this. And I think, you know, you don't have to answer this question now, um, but a question that should be really, uh, heavily weighed by any relevant leaders in the city is alongside all of the other priorities of what the city has to do and has to spend money on, where does clean energy and you know, addressing climate change fall on our list of priorities? And then reflect that in the spending that the city is doing, because it, it's great if we can make some progress with spending zero-city dollars, but we obviously can't make enough progress without actually spending some of the city's own money from the city's own budget and deciding to make it a priority regardless of whatever external decision-makers find important and make grants available on. So again, that's not a, not a question you have to answer right now, but I would strongly encourage that that is a, a lengthy discussion that is made.
All right, I jotted that down.
Okay, um, well, I, I did have a couple other questions, but I feel like I've been talking for long enough, um, so I can, you know, cede the floor to anyone else who has other questions that they would like to ask.
I'm seeing none. So if you got just a couple more questions, you, you might as well throw them out and then we can close the meeting.
Sure. Um, so, uh, implementation plan, I'm wondering if you have, again, not, not specifics, but just general broad strokes of, you know, who would be in charge, which departments are in charge of implementing which elements of this plan?
Um, I cannot answer conclusively, but to the best of my recollection, my department will have some, so Planning and Development, Public Policy, yada, yada, they'll have some impact on some of the components. I think the City Administration Department would have an impact on the others. I cannot confirm or deny if there's a third department or fourth department in there on the margins, but I would say that the bulk is looking to most likely be, uh, done through, uh, Department of Planning and through to the, uh, Administration Department.
Okay, um, one, and si- since, since the bulk of it, you're saying would be in your own department, I'll, I'll ask it.
Oh, oh, just, just to clear, so the bulk is between those two, right? I'm, I, right, like, I, I, there might be ten, hypothetically, ten things, and I might do three and the administration might do, and so, you know, but sure, I'm here and, uh, I'm willing to take the question, sure.
Yeah, I, I was just, you know, wondering, and I understand if you don't have an answer for this right now, but wondering if the departments that are in charge of implementation, you know, moving forward, do, do they have the resources and the, you know, the people, power, the staffing necessary to focus the time and, and put in the energy to implement this plan, or is that something that there would need to be some additional resources directed to those departments for this?
I mean, so, ultimately, that'll be something to be determined, because we're, you know, we're not at the implementation phase yet. But I feel comfortable in, uh, my department's ability to implement the components that, uh, it's supposed to bleed on.
Okay. Um, and, uh, I know we've, you know, the plan, as you've noted, focuses primarily on both short and medium-term, uh, elements of reducing emissions. Are there intentions to continue this process in thinking about long-term solutions? Because, uh, obviously, you know, a long-term solution, eh, the long-term is as long or as short as, as when you start planning, right? I mean, so even if it's something that won't produce results for the next ten years, you know, planning would need to happen in short order, otherwise we wouldn't see the benefits for another twenty or thirty or never. Um, so are there, are there plans to continue this process and expand?
I, um, from a general planning perspective, yes. Uh, these are things that the city's always considering in different capacities, at least it's something that, I do in my department. It's something we've been exploring for years at various times and, uh, considering new things that come up and options that we have available to us. So it's something that, from a general planning perspective, we're definitely considering. I think the city essentially has to, right? There's, I don't think there's any way that any municipality can realistically, you know, ignore the issues that we're facing with this and, uh, not address any of them long-term. I think whether, even if they want to ignore them, I think some things in other municipalities, if they choose to ignore them, they will be having to deal with them in the future, may, maybe ten or twenty years from now, but they will. So I think planning for those issues is inevitable, whether it be through mitigations or emission reductions, et cetera. So the, the, they're on the table, but it's not what the basis, uh, of this plan is right now. And there, there may be in the future, the, you know, like I said, amendments to this plan, there may be new energy or climate change plans that come up as a result of different things that happen, right? Like these, this, uh, community energy plan that, that's being carried out. It's a relatively new thing that came out of this grant funding from the BPU, that we got. And so as opportunities arise to take these actions and develop these plans, we'll be trying to take those opportunities to, to be able to do so.
Okay, so the, the approach at this point in terms of, uh, climate resiliency and, you know, emissions reduction and all related, you know, topics to that, it, it sounds like it's uh, opportunistic, not intentional. I mean, there's, there's no specific intention to prioritize this and to develop out this plan further at this point in time.
I think that right now, we're focused on completing the plan as it is to, in order to submit and access the, uh, the opportunities we have in front of us. I, I don't want to say we're not focusing on those issues because it is a topic of concern. It's just not what this plan is going to address head-on.
Right, no, I, I understand that. I, um, and in this moment, I'm not asking about this plan, because we've already established the scope of this plan is very short-term focused and very limited in scope, um, to just, you know, government-produced emissions, mostly from, you know, transportation. But there's obviously a lot more, I mean, and, and the crisis that we are currently facing and we'll, we'll continue to face uh, at a much greater level in the future from climate change and, and, you know, a lot of, uh, negative consequences that are, are, that we're already seeing and are going to con- continue to come our way. And and by our, I mean just the world in general, but, you know, specifically New Jersey is a coastal state in particular. You know, if we're gonna make any attempt to head that off, decision-makers at all levels of government and in all types of institutions need to be working on this now. And so, again, I can understand if this is not a, you know, if you can give me some concrete answer on this right now, but I, you know, I, I hope that you'll take this back to the discussion table, um, that, you know, for the sake of the future of the city, um, and its residents, it would be best if some type of a part two or some type of ongoing, you know, next step discussion were poised to happen, um, at least by the time that this first step is finalized and, and, you know, not losing any momentum by having a lapse in focus here.
All right. Thank you.
Okay, um, and then I'll, I'll just make the brief point that, uh, if, if external stakeholders have yet to be engaged in this process, I, I hope that there are plans to engage important stakeholders such as the university, um, and other major players in the city soon, because, uh, again, very, very important for any action that would be, you know, in any way beyond the scope of the city's own fleets and buildings. But that's all I got.
All right, thank you. Anyone else? Seeing none, I'm going to move to close the meeting. Thank you all for coming. And, uh, really appreciate the input and the feedback on the, uh, concepts for the plan. And I hope you guys all have a really good Friday and rest of your day and weekend. And, uh, I'm sure we'll, uh, we'll see each other-